Let's call this Monday, January 11th, pleadings for Warner. We'll start with Black Slade and Donkey.
All right, Black Slade. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Right? Right with me. And thank you for the blessings you bestow on us every day. We must not take for granted all the wonderful things that we have in our lives: family, friends, health, relationships, and love. Help us to be copies of these. Our board members are also ones whom we should not take for granted. They truly care for our staff and students, volunteer their time and efforts, as well as they put many hours of time for the benefit of the district. Thank you for sending them our way. We would ask that you please be with the Kincaid family in this time of sorrow. Dr. Kincaid was an advocate for children and a leader in the community. While we were blessed to have had him in our lives, we know he's in good hands now. We also ask that you be with our world leaders, frontline workers, the military, law enforcement, healthcare, and our school family in these trying times. Keep your arms around us and guide us. We ask this of you. Here is the fourth board meeting.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
President.
Will you have a force of leading becomes official? First thing on agenda is a special presentation of the board members in appreciation of their years of service to the children of Ponte City.
All right, this is National School Board Recognition Month, and I am here to tell you I applaud all school board members during these trying times in the nation, but our school board is super, super special, and we're minus one of our heroes, our Wildcats tonight, and which is devastating to all of us, but I'm going to start with Robin, Mr. Riley. He was actually appointed in 2012. It's been eight years. Wow. This is the third time that Robin has served as board president. He serves on the board property and the board finance committee. He's a retired Conoco employee. He is a Ponte City Public School graduate, and he can tell you all kinds of stories about our teachers and some adventures that he and his friends had in school, and David especially. He does have a granddaughter that attends PCPS, and I promise you our board agenda is sometimes 261 pages. Robin reviews every single line, and he will call and question about every single line. It keeps me on my toes because I better know what's in that agenda, and if I don't, I will find out. So he works hard to help us grow as a district, and not only is he very key, he appreciates our activities, and he's very visible at our activities when COVID does not interfere. He's very visible at our activities, but I'll have to tell you, he's been one of our chief COVID trackers as far as new cases in the district. You can always count on him, get a text by 11:30, tell us how many new cases and where we are in the week, so he spends a lot of time doing this, and it's obvious that he has the best interest of the district and the students as his main focus. So then I'm going to go around by length of service. Dawn Newsom was elected in 1999, so 21 years. He's served as board president 13 times. He actually was a past recipient of the Oklahoma State School Board Association Platinum Excellence Award, which is dedicated to recognize the time and effort by exemplary board members in continuing their education beyond the legal requirements. He serves on the board property committee and the finance committee. He manages the Ponte City Airport. Dawn had a child that graduated from PCPS, two children that graduated from PCPS. He's got a great deal of knowledge and experience. He's the voice of experience on our board. He also serves on the hospital board, and that's been invaluable during a global pandemic, so that perspective is very beneficial. He works really hard to best serve the students in the district, and it's a lot of years gone, 21 years. So next we have Ms. Judy Trup. She was elected in 2004, so I guess we're on year 16, Judy. She served as board president twice, in 2011 and 2016, and actually Judy serves on the Oklahoma State School Boards Association Region 3. She's the Region 3 Director. She serves Barfield, Grant K., Noble, Pawnee, and Hain counties, and that's one of your favorite things to do, isn't it? Serve all that Region Directors. So Judy graduated from PCPS. Her kids graduated from PCPS, and she has grandchildren attending PCPS. And not only is she a graduate, but she is a retired Ponte City Public Schools teacher. So she certainly has that perspective of a teacher and understands teaching and learning and the needs of our students, and so brings a great perspective to the board. Nancy Zimmerchuk was elected in 2017, so I think this her fourth year on the board. She serves on the board curriculum committee, and she works at Jupiter Soccer here in Ponte City. Also a graduate of Ponte City Public Schools, and she has had a daughter that's graduated from Ponte City Public Schools and two children who currently attend. So they are very involved in activities, so she hears from a lot of parents and has the parent perspective. She's a wonderful voice for the board, and she wants all of our students to experience not only the best in the classroom but in any of their activities. And on December 30th, we lost one of our own, Dr. David Kincaid. And David was elected in 2006. He served as board president twice, and he served on the board property committee. He owned and operated Kincaid Veterinary Clinic. David was also a graduate of PCPS, as were his children, and he has many grandchildren who attend PCPS. David, guys, was a Wildcat to the core. He loved everything about PCPS. He loved our people, he loved our students, he loved our parents, he loved our employees, he loved our board members, and everyone was David's best friend. And I won't care to tell you, he would let me have it when he thought I needed it, but afterwards he would say, you know, I love you, honey, I'm a David. But he is the most loyal Wildcat that will probably ever be. He really loved our district. He will be our forever Wildcat, and we will miss him greatly. Rest in peace, David. We all love you. During that typical year, whatever that is, these men and women who are on our board bring a vast amount of knowledge, experience, and different perspectives to the table. They question, they bring ideas, they offer suggestions, and these folks make a five-year commitment. And Robin, how long does it take you to read 260 pages of that board agenda?
Early in the morning, sport.
Every day, and he's always sending us information. He puts a lot of hours. Everybody puts in a lot of hours, and they work behind the scenes. You see them at a two-hour board meeting, guys, it's constant. And it's calling, they're elected, but they get paid nothing. However, this year is certainly not normal and has presented unbelievable challenges, yet these men and women continue to serve. The safety of our staff and students is their highest priority while continuing to support the academics and emotional well-being during the pandemic. And there are no easy decisions, but this group spends long, thoughtful hours making these decisions. Just like everyone else during this global pandemic, their decisions do not make everyone happy. They have had to endure discord that's so polarizing during this pandemic. It's been a tough year on them too, but yet they continue to serve. It's not your job. You want to serve, you are volunteering. And I can't say enough of wonderful assets for this district and by my own people. Thank you for all you do. And you can see that our, even during the pandemic, I was a little bit worried because our kids haven't been in school. Look at this. Our people certainly appreciate you, and you make a difference. And with that said, Trout made a special video just for board members, so I want you to see the video. There we go.
Hats off to the Board of Education. Thanks for the love you are.
Thank you, Robin Riley, for making sports possible.
Trout first graders say?
Thank you for hiring great teachers and others.
Thank you, PCPS board members, for all you do. Have fun to you.
Thank you to you, too.
Remember what it's like to be a teacher.
Hats off to our board members. Thank you so much for everything you give us with technology, technology, professional development materials.
Thank you.
Hats off to you, Mrs. Zimmerchuk. Thank you for being a great mom and for bringing another's point of view to our board decisions.
Thank you for providing great teachers.
Hats off to Dawn Newsom. Thank you for serving on our board for 21 years.
Hats off to our Board of Education for providing our students with textbooks and books for every classroom.
We appreciate them because kids can use them at school as well as when they're at home.
On behalf of the kindergarten teachers here at Trout, I'd like to say thank you to our board members.
Thank you for all of the educational games and activities that you supply us with.
I want hats off to you.
Thanks for making music part of our world.
This video wouldn't be complete without a shout out to David Kincaid. David was a great worker for us, a great friend. He loved our kids, he loved our staff, he loved our community. Thank you, David. Rest in peace.
Aw, I'm so sweet. I'll make sure you all get a copy of that. I'll send it to your working mail, or school email. Super nice.
Thank you all.
No, thank you.
Next up will be the presentation of Employee of the Month, Friend of Education. The first one will be the Certified Employee of the Month. That goes to Barbara Keese, the Executive Director of Curriculum.
She's here. Stay six feet.
PCPS is proud and recognized Barbara Keese, the Executive Director of Curriculum for certified as a Certified Employee of the Month. Barbara deserves this honor for many reasons. She has fought countless hours since the COVID-19 outbreak to ensure that our Ponte City Virtual Academy could become a reality and to ensure that teachers were prepared to pivot to distance learning when needed. Barbara wears many hats in the district, from overseeing all the secondary curriculum to registration, to EL services, district test testing, and the list goes on. When BCVA was added due to COVID, Barbara was the one that set up the processes to get this newly formed site off the ground. This involved countless hours, training organizing, setting up professional development, rostering students for learning platforms, ordering curriculum materials, fielding questions from teachers and parents, enrolling and dropping students, obtaining materials for teachers, et cetera. Wouldn't want to be tired.
Late at night, too. She would be rostering. I talked to her late, and she would be rostering.
Barbara has an uncanny ability to set up protocols and organize processes. She was the pioneer, put in charge of developing the process for centralized registration, and has tweaked and improved that process each year to ensure it runs smoothly and that the experience is one of convenience for our parents. Barbara is extremely level-headed, and this cool and calm demeanor has served her very well in the last few months with tensions running so high by stress brought on by the virus. Barbara is also a team player who thinks of others when making decisions. She never wants to make anything hard on her colleagues and often takes up the slack to ensure this doesn't happen. I didn't verify that. Barbara is a 40-year veteran that has, 43-year veteran that has spent her entire career with PCPS district. She has seen most of everything, and she is fearless. You can always count on determination and grit to get her through tough times. She leads her team in the same manner, always ensuring, all involved, that we will all get through this. Barbara never complains. She just rolls up her sleeves and gets it done. It is because of this she greatly deserves this award. Congratulations, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. Next will be the Support Employee of the Month. That goes to Heather Golay, a teacher assistant at Washington Pre-K Center.
Heather Golay is part of Team G at Washington. Team G for Greenhagen and Golay. Would not be what it is without Heather, and not just because of her last name. Heather is the type of employee who can see something that needs to be done and will do it, and will do it well. Not only is she self-motivated and reliable, she is passionate about her job and the impact she has on students. Heather is a natural with a true gift for nurturing and inspiring children. For her, this job is more than a job. It's a labor of love, and it's a part of who she is. Heather can be seen at the school late into the evenings, sometimes on weekends, prepping materials for organizing the classroom. During whole class quarantines and throughout the school-wide closure, Miss Golay read books online to students and stayed in close contact with students by attending the class Zoom meetings. She is a vital part of Washington Pre-K. She is appreciated beyond these words, and we are grateful for her dedication and hard work. Congratulations.
The last one will be the Friend of Education, which goes to the Free Will Baptist Church, supporter of the Washington Pre-K Center also.
Ponte City Free Will Baptist Church, for the past few years, the Free Will Baptist Church has taken Washington Pre-K Center under their wing and provided support in many different ways. They continually bless us with gifts for the staff, resources for our students, and continued thoughts and prayers. Last school year, Pastor Adams designed our Pre-K graduation yard signs, and church members paid for the majority of the cost for each student to celebrate their graduation. They have provided meals for teachers during parent-teacher conferences as well as special treats and sonnet groups throughout the year. This school year, the church raised funds to pay for all of the students' school supplies, and each certified staff received a $50 gift certificate to Chili's to kick off the year. This past month, not only did they provide new coats for several of our students, but for students at all school sites. The members of the Ponte City Free Will have the kindest hearts and the sincerest hopes and wishes of our school and for our community. We are thankful for the pastors, the office staff, and all the church members. Thank you for all you do for Washington and for the Ponte City schools. Congratulations.
Thank you to all three of the recipients. We did not have any public comment, did we?
No.
Next, we'll go right to the superintendent's report with potential board discussions.
Okay, I'm going to position myself where I'm at least six feet from everybody, but I can be far enough away where I can see the board, so excuse me if I have my back to you. It's not on purpose, just safety protocols. I'm having to give you a COVID update, and this is the K County Alert System levels since our last board meeting. You can see that we are beyond the 50 mark at our risk level, and I'm telling you, it is not going to go down, I believe, until there is a mass vaccination for people because we have tried to bend the curve, we vet, we complete, and until everybody quarantines, follows protocols, distance, wears masks, it's not going to happen. And here's what I can tell you in our schools. How many cases now hurt us? 200, close to 300 cases. We do our own contact tracing, so there are maybe 10, maybe 10, that we can trace back to school. And typically, that's from an activity. We had an elementary school that had two classes go into quarantine, and the kids are really good friends. They play soccer together without a mask. They go to each other's houses, so a lot of it is coming outside of school. But we are really strict with our mitigation to make sure it doesn't spread. We can keep it from spreading, but we can't keep it out. So I'll let you know, we can feel it with positivity rates this high. Just for the two weeks that we were off at Christmas, we had 60 total cases. So in two weeks, there were 60 cases, and most of those were reported to us on either the fourth and the fifth. Some of these cases never had tested positive, had their 10 days, and were able to come back to school on the fifth. Some of these cases did not start. Some were staff, and you can see that, and some were student. And so none of these occurred at school because it was the break. It wasn't even distance learning. I confirm that with Curtis. Is this distance learning or just a break? This is just the break. And we still had cases, which I reported last time to you, via staff while we were on distance learning, and typically came from outside. Here's our weekly totals from last week. And if you saw the press release, was that just last night? Last night, that you saw our totals. On the fourth and the fifth, when I just put multiple, probably a lot of those were positive before the fourth or the fifth. These were residual that we were still experiencing from winter break. We had our first contact trace at Trout on Wednesday. There was a positive case. We quarantined the entire classroom. The student was not feeling well when they came to school. So on Thursday, the 7th, we had a contact trace at Poe High and Barfield Elementary, and we closed the case. We closed a class at Barfield. And then we had a contact trace, which works a little differently at the secondary. We do the six-feet radius and trace in every classroom. But because of the viral load, we closed a whole classroom. Now you see that there are eight positives? Some of these were experiencing symptoms or had tested and never came back to school, but it was reported on that day, so we only had two contact traces. Then on Friday, the 4th, we had two contact traces at West Middle School and one at Roosevelt, and we had six positive cases. Some of those open cases, which I'll talk to you about, were positives, but we only had three contact traces on Friday. Affected a lot of people. As you can see, there was a bus involved on the Friday contact trace. Then after 4 o'clock on Friday, before we even left, we had our first weekend contact trace that we were notified about at 4:30, and it went downhill from there. So all weekend, there were eight contact tracing investigations occurring. For the most part, we had to finish them up this morning, and I'll give you that data. So there we are for the week, last week, first week back. We know it's going to be high, and our goal is to keep face-to-face instruction as many days as possible. So here's just today. We had eight weekend investigations and then four contact tracing investigations today, and it may be five or six by now by the time I finish that. There are 12 cases reported today, 218 close contacts, 230 total. Of our two weekend contact traces, two of them involved activities, varsity activities. So those activities are down for 10 days. We had two buses involved. One was an activity bus, and the other was just a regular route bus. And then a big one for us is we had a positive at Cat Care at one of our elementary schools. And you know, our teachers send a lot of their kids to Cat Care, so it affected a lot of our teachers because now there's no childcare for their child after school.
Of the 12 cases, what was the breakdown between students and staff?
I can't tell you, but Curtis can look it up real quick.
Of this weekend?
No, just of the 12 today. It'll be on your sheet. I just didn't report it. It'll be on your weekly sheet. I just didn't report it between student and staff. Come on, he's looking that up. This is our current site data, and it can tell you where we are as a district. But I'm not going to go through these lines with you, but a couple of lines that really concern me are the not identified quarantines pending results. This means that we have people who are testing that we will not allow to come back to school or to work until we get a result. And you can see in the staff, we have four pending. In our students, we have 38 pending, for a total of 42. Now, I will tell you, we do get a lot of negatives from testing, so I'm not saying all of those will be positive, but it's likely if they test positive and if they were exhibiting symptoms, well, probably not unless they came to school today, but it will result in some contact tracing. But overall, as a district, we have 9% of our students and staff out in close contacts and not even 1% in isolation. So break that down even further, and this is probably more important. You can see our site percentages as of 4:30 today, and I feel confident that's probably changed, but I had to stop at some point to prepare. In a bit, I'm going to propose to you that we change our distance learning timeframe from our previous meeting, and I'll talk to you about that in just a bit. But we determined we were going to use our own data to decide if we were going to transition to distance learning at any particular site. We did not want to quantify that data because it can look different at any particular site. So you can see that Washington has the most staff out with 12.5%. But that 12.5% reflects four in close contacts. Now, if you look at Washington Pre-K, let me tell you what that plus two means. That plus two means that they have a child whose daycare closed, so they are not there. They're not at work. Eight-four was the breakdown. Eight students, four staff members today of the 12. Take a look at Woodlands. 30% are out. Two close contacts at Woodlands with students. That's what the two in parentheses means, plus Cat Care. Only two classes are closed, but there are 83 students on quarantine. They had a lot of individual close contacts or quarantines from Christmas that are transferring over. So we only have two student test isolations in effect, and these were the two students that played soccer together and are friends outside of school. So they're at 30%. I talked to Tim, and he said they were fine. Okay, so they have four staff members out, five staff members out, three on close contact, one because they're caring for their kid because the daycare closed, and one positive test in effect. Tim's got advantage right now because in an elementary school, if you close a class, the kids are on quarantine, and the teacher teaches from home, so it's actually fewer kids in the building. And one of those elementary classrooms' teacher tested positive before. So that teacher is exempt for 90 days. So she is working from school, and her class is at home. So he said he's got it covered. One class is not covered, and he's covering it. One class is not covered, and he's covering it with a TA. Who's student is quarantined? She's a one-on-one with a particular student who is quarantined. So he, he's not ready to move to distance learning. Now, if we were at thirty percent at the high school, for East or West, it'd be a different story, you know, because we go from class to class to class. It's one teacher, one class that gets quarantined at the elementary. We've got the six and seven periods at our secondary schools. There's no way we could make it if we got to thirty percent. When we went to distance learning at the high school, before the district went to the distance learning, we were at twenty-four point seven percent. So it's going to look different everywhere, so we didn't want to quantify when we were going to make that call. And I talked to Tina at Washington. They're doing great. They six, six of their staff members out, but they're doing okay. If you look at East and Wildcat Academy and Liberty and Union, you know, they're not even close to going to distance learning. So it could be that we have different sites on different, distance learning at different times, and I'll talk to you more about that. I fully expect for a site or sites to transition to distance learning at some point. Here's our trend data, and this is from the beginning of the year. And the first bar line is when we moved the high school to distance learning, we were at eleven point one eight percent district-wide. This is district-wide. Our lowest week was the week of the ice storm when we didn't have kids for two days. One was a distance learning practice day, and one was an ice storm day. And then the entire district went on distance learning the week of the twentieth. And you can see our data, and when our kids aren't here, it just goes down, okay? The second line, the last time I reported to you, was at the last board meeting on twelve-eleven. So our twelve eighteen data would just have been employees. And you can see that, but here's where we are in the first week back. We are going to have a vaccine point of dispensary. The health department is going to come to us and vaccinate our employees who choose to be vaccinated, who want to be vaccinated. We are not going to require that. We could. I don't think there's a superintendent in the state that's going to push that at this point when there's not a lot of research. But as you know, we surveyed our people. We are actually in Phase II-C right now. That's adults age sixty-five and older and adults of any age with comorbidities, two or more issues. And that population, I believe, is six hundred and thirty-five thousand. The health department broke those down into two parts. So right now, we were on adults age sixty-five and older, and they're expecting that to go on for a couple more weeks. In K County, there will be pods offered at Unity Gym for the next Tuesday, Thursday, for two or three weeks for sixty-five and older. Then they will start comorbidities. I feel confident teachers won't, our pod will not be in January, which, that's what we were originally told. The state, the, the health department knows how many doses they are going to get the Tuesday before the week of dispensing. So they have to plan based on their allocation on Tuesday. So it's just like a shot in the dark. They don't, they don't know how many to plan for, but they won't plan for more than doses that they have. So we are going to have our own pod for our teachers. I don't know how many doses that will be. If I had to guess, we'll need at least about five hundred doses. I don't know if that will include any of our private schools, if they'll have enough doses for our private schools, or if they'll try to combine a pod and, and have, you know, see Tonkawa and Nuker, Tonkawa, Blackwell together? Don't know. We're going to be ready. I'm going to roll out a survey tomorrow, and we're going to go ahead and be planning for it, and I'm sure we'll get less than a week's notice. So I would say our timeframe for PCPS employees who want the vaccine will be February. We are encouraging our employees to register for the vaccine through the OSDH portal. We have employees that qualify now. They're sixty-five or older. And I talked to Amy Wehun at the health department, and it's almost impossible to get one of those appointments. And when you're working with kids, you just can't sit and watch for it on the internet. So oftentimes, at the end of a pod, they will have some extra doses of vaccine. They have to do something with it immediately because they have to keep it cold, and there may be some left in vials. So she told me that she would put our sixty-five and older people on a priority list, and it's standby priority only. So they're going to have to be able to drop and run and go get a vaccine. But we have still told them, still register with the portal. We had twenty-five of our employees that responded. Originally, it was twenty-one, and, and then some more had just checked their email today. So our employees who fall within another category, if they have two or more comorbidities, if they have comorbidities and they're at any ages as an adult, they will be next. Already talked to you about our priority list, and I'll remind you of our survey. We have seven hundred and fifty-one employees, I think, as of this ten seconds, somewhere around there. Five hundred and forty-six participated. We know two hundred and ten definitely said yes. We know that one hundred and thirty-four definitely said no. I doubt we'll change their mind. Of those undecided, and we're not going to try to, that's their decision. Of the undecided, there were two hundred and two. I, I would imagine a lot of those undecided will, will decide to go ahead and get the vaccine. But we're short two hundred participants, so I, I would guess we would need about five hundred doses for PCPS. And hopefully, a lot of our people sixty-five and older can go ahead and get that, and some of our people already have done that. And we are covering for our people if they can get it in K County. Somebody asked me, they were going to Enid, could we cover for them? Yeah, we can't cover for that, but we'll cover here in K County, and our principals are going to do that. So that's where we are on the vaccine.
So you're doing, you're going to do another survey tomorrow?
Yes.
Oh, a survey for everybody, so I don't think you can get it.
I'm, I'm going to get ready. I'm going to be ready. I'm going to have organized where to go, what site, what time, so that we can cover. And we can do it. We'll just have to be, I don't want standing in line. I don't want safety protocols not followed. So we're going to use three, three sites that have outside entrances to large areas, and I'll share more about that. We are going to continue our rigid mitigation. And now it's not an option to not wear a mask. We have some students that try to be defiant, and we're coming, it's part of our dress code now. So you wear it, or we've got an option for you. Here's the thing, we can keep it, we can keep it from spreading in our school if the protocols are followed. We've got a couple of, a couple of students that are kind of testing us on that, but I think they've got the message that they're going to have to enroll in PCBA because we're going to protect our students and our staff at all costs. And we still take tons of heat on quarantines and isolations, and that's the way it is. We're going to send our people home who may have been in close contact, even though that positivity rate is not very high. We are not going to risk it. And trust me, I spend most of my day arguing with parents about that, and they're trying to convince me they shouldn't be quarantined. And at this point, the health department is the government agency in charge of a global pandemic. And, and sometimes I just have to say, take it up with the health department at this point because it's not going to change. I have an email from the state epidemiologist. He will not take positive antibodies tests, and, and we've got some people having a hard time dealing with that, but we are not going to go rogue with the health department. We do a good job of keeping it out and not, not spreading within. We've just got to keep it out, and we will continue. So some of the things that we've done, we've increased accountability of wearing a mask appropriately for both students and staff. And I'm telling you, we don't have a problem with staff much at all unless they forget, something like that. We have staff eating in their classrooms rather than their lounge, rather than the lounge. We cannot risk putting our families in an impossible predicament by having six people at a six-foot table eat lunch. You can't wear your mask. And we're saying two employees per classroom, at opposite ends of the classroom. Students who test negative on day five or later may return to school on day eight after the quarantine started. They will still have to wear a mask for the full fourteen days. You know, the, the health department changed the quarantine guidelines in hopes that people would follow it more, and it's just not being followed all around, but a lot of people do. Our kids will have to wear the mask or employee if they test out and come back early the full fourteen days. We've tightened the mask, masking protocols during activities. Our kids have to have a gaiter on around their neck, and if they're in line to do an activity, or if they're huddled up, or they're doing low intensity, we expect the gaiter to be over their nose. And if they're at full throttle, they obviously can pull the gaiter down because that can pose problems in and of itself. Spectator guidelines. Our winter sports are going on right now. There are no spectators at swim. However, it was senior night last Thursday. We sent two, two family members for senior. We only had three seniors. We're not going to deprive our, our families of senior night. At Robson, we're going to have four vouchers per participant, whether they play basketball, whether they wrestle, whether they're a cheerleader, whether they're a high stepper. Our band is going to record drum cheer drills, the fight song, all kinds of music for us. Our cheerleaders are just going to do dance routines because OSSAA tells us not to incite yelling. The cheerleaders can be there, but they can't incite yelling from the crowds. So they've recorded some videos of them yelling, the, you say red, I say blue, that they will do, that will play over the big screen at Robson. So we do have some increased spectator guidelines. We are going to have senior night. If we make it to senior night for basketball Friday night, our basketball, right now, are only winter sports. Basketball and swim are two winter sports that are not quarantined, and that's both boys and girls, basketball and swim. So basketball is supposed to go to Putnam City tomorrow night. What is today? Today's Monday, Tuesday, tomorrow night? We'll see if they make it, and we'll see if Friday happens, but Friday will be senior night. We're not going to let parents come in and decorate lockers. They can make a poster, and our people will put them on lockers and take a picture for them. So we're going to have some very rigid guidelines, and people don't like it, but our goal is to keep our kids in school as much as possible, and we're just going to have to be rigid to make it happen. We are keeping it out, and we're not going to experiment with relaxing on our protocols to see if it changes anything. We'll continue to work with OSDH and the K County Health Department on our isolation protocols. And I wanted just to throw this up here, sometimes we have to give this to parents to let them know that we are in charge of quarantines and isolations. We do the contact tracing. We do not have the authority to issue the isolation or the quarantine. The, the health department does by state statute, and it can be a misdemeanor if you don't follow isolation and quarantine guidelines. Now, we can't put a fine on anybody, but if someone is isolated or quarantined, we can keep them out of our buildings. And we, and we will, and we do. And if they are quarantined from the classroom, they're also quarantined from an activity. If they're a virtual student and they're quarantined, then we open up the test for them so they don't have to come into the registration center to take the test. So we've had to drop this, provide this to parents in some cases. Okay, so there are some topics for possible action, and then I have some action items on here, Mr. O'Reilly, on the agenda that we can discuss afterwards. So we want to talk about modification to the distance learning timeframe. If it's determined that we don't have enough staff available to safely and effectively operate a campus, or if a significant number of students are out, then we may transition to distance learning. I would propose we change this to a period of ten calendar days to quarantine, to correlate with the new quarantine guidelines. Previously, it was fourteen days. If it's ten days, that's ten calendar days, so that includes a weekend. And it would be less days, it would be a beginning day and an end day for sites. Now, it will keep more kids in school, but if you'll remember from the chart, at this point, if we were to transition to distance learning, I think it would be a travesty to close Liberty and Union and East. They have very few kids out. So we could all be going at different times, in school and out of school, but look at Tim. He, he, he can cover. There he is at thirty percent, again, in the high school, and East and West could likely not do that. So that's one of the action items. Change from fourteen days to distance learning to ten days of distance learning, if deemed necessary. Then if it's deemed necessary that the entire district go to distance learning, we can call a special board meeting. The other action item is a recommendation for extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, and that was not renewed for public entities after twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty. Now, public entities can choose to continue on with that. And with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act leave, our employees have ten days that doesn't affect their leave if they are quarantined, or if they're isolated, or if their child's daycare closes. I believe it's the right thing to do to continue on with the Family First Coronavirus leave. So the mandated portion expired. We think it's necessary. Our, our employees are going to be in close contacts of students. It's one of the, it, it can't be avoided. It just black cans. So we would like to extend this leave to exposure to a case at school. And right now, we are recommending to continually offering this leave as detailed in the Family First Coronavirus Act Response, Response Act through March the twelfth. Now, we can always come back and extend it on after March the twelfth. I don't even know when our March board meeting is, but it's somewhere up there. But right now, we say continue on through March the twelfth. After ten days, they go into their own leave. So they've been quarantined more than once, they go into their own leave, and that's detailed in the Family First Coronavirus Act. However, if they are caring for their child, they can move right into FMLA for twelve So here's what our memorandum of understanding is going to say if the board so desires. Emergency sick leave and emergency FMLA leave may be denied by the superintendent or the designated, which is Curtis. So we're not going to deny the leave, but I will have to tell you, we had some people on quarantine, and it's, it's, it's very few on quarantine that were on paid leave because it was mandated by law, and they were out in the back of the community. Now, we don't go tracking that down. We do not have time for it, but I promise you, other employees and parents will send us pictures. So we, we have them, and there's nothing we can do about it because it was mandated. I, I don't see the need if, work to pay while they're on quarantine. So they, if they have their own leave, they can dip into that leave.
Curtis, the board meeting.
Okay?
Thanks, thanks, board.
Okay, so we can see how we are with our cases and with our vaccines and determine if we want to move forward on that board meeting?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect.
I'm, I'm still a little confused on the pay.
I'm still a little confused on the pay. Teacher will get paid if you're waiting, whether they're on leave or not.
Right, but if we dock their leave, then that uses their own leave. Now-
What about support personnel?
Same thing. They'll get paid if they're on this leave. Now, they still get paid on sick leave too, but not personal business. So we will call it sick leave as long as it's coronavirus if they have the leave available. Let me talk to you a little bit about leave. We have a very generous leave policy. Then you go into cost of sub for twenty days. Then you go into full salary dock. I will tell you, most of our employees are gone due to COVID now. We don't have a lot of absences. We did today, but a lot of that had to do with COVID. So it's no, it's no money out of our pocket as far as the district goes to extend that leave to them because it's already budgeted. Their salary's already budgeted in. It's just not docking the employee their own leave, which to me, they are going to be close contacts to our kids. Then, then we need to utilize that coronavirus act. There's ten days. We're not proposing starting over with another ten days, just continuing on with the provisions. And Curtis met with the HR directors via Zoom on Friday and it's all over the map what people are doing. Some people are continuing. Some people are not doing anything. Some people are doing, if it happens on our time, we'll cover it. If it happens on your time, we won't. So here's what I imagine. If we quarantine and they're out and about and somebody snaps us, then, then yeah, get your own leave.
So what you're, you're proposing that you or Curtis will make the call whether it's a justified leave or not?
Yeah, and we're, 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 we're not going to question their integrity unless we have proof. And trust me, we work twenty-four seven. We don't have time to go out and investigate. So, but I promise you, people send us stuff whether we want to or not. It's like, oh.
Is there any recourse if the employee disagrees with you?
We don't have that, but we, we make the final call. I mean, this is, yeah, it's not negotiated.
They make course they would in any other leave. I mean, if we make this memorandum of understanding, right now, there's no recourse at all.
Yeah, we don't have to offer it at all.
But they just feel that it's changed. I mean, it's like any other leave, but you have to meet the policy.
Really, it's only once for ten days, or fourteen days was, and if that year, year, again, in most businesses, you're-
Right, unless you're caring for your child who is quarantined and then you dip into FMLA and it's twelve weeks.
Yeah, right.
Sixty days.
So we're going to-
Curtis, how many do we have that have exceeded the ten? Low percentage?
Fifteen?
Maybe.
That's high?
That's probably high.
But I mean, most people never get past ten because of weekends and that kind of stuff. So fifteen is probably pretty high. The contract says that contract, have you seen it to ten or used it? We had very few that have used it.
Right.
I mean, like ten.
Now, here's one thing that I can tell you. If it's a teacher and they can teach from home, it helps our kids. We will put them on administrative leave. We can't put a bus driver on administrative leave because they can't drive a bus from home. Because we're not going to have a sub for our kids. So we have some teachers who are out on administrative leave because they are teaching from home.
Let me ask this question. Curtis, how many employees have probably been on leave since this started?
No.
Ballpark. Where I'm going with this is of the hundred or seventy-five or however many, how many do you estimate that you all will probably have to turn down?
How do you estimate? I count on one hand.
This isn't going to come up very often is what you're saying.
It comes up because someone has basically just ignored-
Protocols.
Protocols we have in place and just said, I'm not doing it and, and were they-
So you're saying it's a very small percentage?
We're talking yes.
Well, and here, here's another thing. We don't even want to tell our people what to do outside the contract day, but, but they're finding out that if they're on, following those protocols twenty-four seven, they are going to be a close contact. So I think our, our employees are to the point, those that have been, I will tell you, ninety-nine percent of our employees follow those protocols better than anybody in town because they know what they're supposed to do. But those who aren't, who think it won't happen to them, it will. So we always, we approve emergency sick leave and emergency FMLA as it is. We, we will deny it if it puts the, we puts the hardship, the hardship on the district and, and I can't imagine when that would be.
Just a general statement that, I mean, I think we do that in these situations. If there's a new hardship on the district for whatever reason, we, we may have to have it. And that would be in the case of, it would happen to me because it's a quarantine. We don't have control. We can deny the leave and so we take our leave. It never puts a hardship on the district for whatever reason.
Now, I will tell you, we're requesting a memorandum of understanding with bargaining unit. So if you want to talk about this more in executive session, this is not our topic in the executive session in the board groups and we can come back out and talk about it. But I, I think that if we're asking our employees to come to work and they're going to be a close contact, that we extend the leave. This is not, they are going to be, this isn't like a business where you can distance.
We had, Mr. Robson, we had these rules in place last semester. I can see it maybe, maybe each twice out of the hundreds, hundred or so employees. So we're talking extremely small percentage, but we just have to give some flexibility. We have to give some flexibility to make the call on that.
For the sake of time, Zach, do you see a major problem with this?
I don't. This is going to be a memorandum of understanding. It's essentially the same as what they do with regular sick leave. If a teacher puts in for sick leave and is seen at a fair of the heart and a picture is taken and it's texted to Shelley or Curtis or, or shared with them on Facebook, that teacher is going to have their leave changed from sick to personal business. So it's the same thing. It's just applying it to the COVID leave situation. It's a, it's violation of contract and if a teacher does that, I cannot defend them as the ACT president. So I don't have an issue because it's basically telling them if you're on quarantine leave, you are not supposed to leave home. And if you are breaking that, then the district is not obligated to provide you with the COVID leave.
That'll save you from having to stick around until we come back from the executive session. They asked me that now.
And I talked to him before this and we had to give, the next thing is junior high extracurricular activities. Okay, I'm telling you, everybody's like, okay, so it's safe to do varsity activities and not safe to do junior high activities? None of them are safe. And when I say safe, there's a risk of being quarantined and we're willing to take that risk for our varsity kids because they're going to lose that experience and we'll keep them in school. One reason why we are suspending junior high, we don't make cuts at the junior high level. We have tons of kids participating, which poses the potential for tons of kids to be a close contact and be out of school for ten days. Another thing at the junior high level, it puts our kids at risk just riding the shuttle to the facility. They could go down in a close contact quarantine for ten days just for riding to the tennis courts on the shuttle or the golf course. So it's not-
Oh, we want to take care of this.
We have, but what I'm telling you is I, I just, I'm just bringing it back up. I am recommending that we not because of the positivity rate's so high. So what I would recommend is we can do one of two things. If our positivity rates decrease, I will advocate to re-estate junior high activities. I can confer with you individually since our policy does not require a special board meeting, to resume activities, just to suspend activities, or we can call a special board meeting. But as of this ten seconds, it's not a recommendation because it will certainly have us transition to distance learning. Okay.
Only suggestion I would make on that slide, if the positivity rates decrease significantly.
Okay.
Because I, I don't want to go from a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and thirty-one to a decrease, therefore.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen.
Because I'm okay with the way it is. I'm okay with the way it is.
Yeah, it's fine.
Don't change anything.
Okay. All right. Okay, the next thing, reluctantly, we do have to talk about appointing a new member of the Board of Education. So here's the procedures for the appointment. The board has sixty days from the date of the vacancy to either appoint an individual or call a special election to fill the seat. Since David passed away, we do not have to declare his seat vacant, but the sixty day starts from the day after he passed, which was twelve thirty-one. So we have sixty days to find, advertise, get interested applicants, compile the information, fact check, interview, and appoint. So we're liable to have to have two special board meetings. When's our board meeting? On February the eighth, Betty? Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
The eleventh.
Thirteen. It's, 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 it's quick turnaround and I just don't think we can do it all in a quick turnaround. I do want to advertise beginning tomorrow. We weren't going to advertise before the service and I wanted to have this board meeting too. So we've got things written up. So we will have to appoint a new board member, or you will, by March the first. We will issue a press release seeking at candidates, applicants. The candidate must live in Ward Four for at least six months. They can't have just moved into Ward Four. Here's another thing that really I would recommend though.
Meeting's the eighth, same as March, March eighth on the same day.
Okay. Well, we have to have it before, we have to appoint before the March eighth board meeting. So it's probably going to be two special board meetings, one for the interview and one for appointment, which we just had five minutes. So the board clerk will verify applicants residing in the ward and meet the qualifications and will send a questionnaire to all verified applicants with the corresponding due date. And right now, Betty, Betty and I talked and we're thinking maybe January twenty-ninth. That's seventeen days from tomorrow because we're going to have a busy month after that. Based on the responses on the questionnaire, we determine if the, if the applicants meet the criteria required by state law. And I'll talk to you about those. A special board meeting will be scheduled and the board will interview the applicants and vote to appoint or to call a special election to fill the seat of Ward Four. I'm hoping out there. The appointed applicant will serve until the next regular election, at which time they can file to run for the remainder of the term of Ward Four, which is twenty twenty-four. So it's going to be a process.
We, we can't, you know, if we're going to be here regularly, the eighth, we interview.
Do, if we interview at a, at a regular board meeting, it's going to be a long board Okay, we'll see, we'll see what applicants we have and we'll go from there. Okay, so the qualifications, they must live in the boundaries, obviously. They must have resided and registered to vote within those boundaries for a minimum of six months prior. And they must be a registered voter in that ward for six months and their registration must match the address of the ward. I really didn't know that. They cannot have a felony charge or an embe, embezzlement charge on their record. They must have a high school diploma or a quid pro quo. They must not be related to a PCPS current employee within the second degree by blood or marriage. In first degree, siblings, moms, dads. Second degree, brothers, sisters, grandchildren, that kind of thing. So, well, there you go up there. Okay, so questions or concerns on anything presented?
What is, where are the boundaries of his district?
Oh, well, they, they go over to Overbrook. They go out in the Garfield area, out toward the Osage a bit, in Roosevelt. So there's some Roosevelt in his area.
It's primarily the Southern Park, Ponca City, Fourteenth Street on the east, Overbrook on the north, and it goes pretty much to the west, all the way to the boundaries of Ponca City, pretty much straight. It drops down a little bit from Overbrook on the western part.
I'll pull it up for you.
What's the, where, what's the west boundary?
That'd be the east boundary, wouldn't it?
East boundary is Fourteenth, west boundary is the west part Ponca City. It just-
Does that go away, pass away?
No, that'd run into Lincoln District, wouldn't it?
No.
No, it's south, it's south of East End City.
So you stop at Chestnut from going over to my Chestnut, you know, this Chestnut over here, then it stops on Second Street on the north side and that is what I think Roosevelt and I don't know what that street is on the north. So I'm just trying to go north.
It's the all little colored ward on our PCPS website. It shows the board. So comments, questions, or discussions, and if you want to act on those action items. Got a list of there.
Okay. If we don't have any discussion, what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve items one, two, and three as presented by the superintendent.
I want you to approve those three items.
Have a motion from Dawn and a second from Nancy.
Hang on just one second.
Basically, why Jane's doing that, the changes are to change from fourteen days to ten days for distance learning, the emergency sick leave with a memorandum of understanding with the teachers union, and then to keep junior high, high activities exactly as we've already approved. And that shall, that's the summary of the three.
Motion made by Mr. Newsom, second.
Seconded by Nancy.
Nancy, okay.
Comments or questions? Ready? Call for the vote.
Mrs. Tru, Mrs. Zemmerstein, I'm Mr. Newsom.
Hi.
Mr. Riley.
Hi. Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. We had Franklin Hudson on it. The only contract over ten thousand was the BSM online store. The school district will get a ten percent discount for all items sold. So with that, I'd look for a motion to approve items one, two, and three on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You get a ten percent credit.
Yeah.
Towards other-
Credit discount, same thing. Yeah, credit for those purchases.
Second.
Motion from Judy, second from Dawn. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemmerstein?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye. Number seven, action item. I'd look for a motion to approve items one, A through M, which are all the standard discussions we have in the finance meeting.
Motion for the first item.
Second.
Motion from Dawn, second from Judy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemmerstein?
Aye.
Item, motion carries. Item two is an agreement with Central One Software. It's an antivirus, anti-malware, anti-ransomware. As you all remember, we were hacked last year, caused this to delay the start of school for three days. Hopefully by purchasing this software, that will help. Item B is the annual renewal of the Microsoft licensing, which protects the laptops, desktops, and the servers for the district. Look for a motion to approve both A and B under item two.
Motion for Tom Bass.
Second.
Motion by Dawn, second from Judy. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemmerstein?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three is consider and take action on a resolution to request a special audit of allocations received by the district. It has to do with the eleven percent versus the fourteen percent tax that the superintendent discussed last week with, or last meeting with us. And it's the five offended-
with, or last meeting with us and it's the five offended schools having to send a letter to request a special audit from the state office.
The, the five plaintiff districts, there's five of us, but we work on behalf of all the disadvantaged schools and, um, Western Heights didn't join in with us and Cindy Byrd, the state auditor, did an audit, the Supreme Court pushed this back to jury trial, but this is another effort now that, uh, Western Heights is going to go in with us on this, this case.
So, there's the five disadvantaged schools basically requesting that Cindy Byrd do an audit.
I make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion from Dawn, second from Nancy, call for the vote.
Mrs. Zemmerstein, aye. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru, aye.
Motion carries. Number 4, motion and vote to convene an executive session for the following purposes, discuss the possible termination, reassignments, resignations and employment of personnel on an attached, detailed personnel report within your meeting agenda, to discuss the superintendent of schools' contract, the annual contract review with her, to discuss employment of superintendent, to discuss the purchase of appraisal of real property, uh, to discuss confidential conversation with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation. We'll have a motion to move to executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Judy and a second from Dawn. Dawn.
Mrs. Zemmerstein, aye. Mr. Newsom, aye. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru, aye.
Motion carries. We're in executive session, Judy's going to stay here. We'll return to open session, recital of the board president's minutes of executive session, acceptable of the board minutes clerk, does remain confidential. Item 7, consider and take action on the ratification, renewal of the contract or a new contract for the superintendent of schools. Uh, at this point, I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the contract for, um, three years, with the extension for the 20, 30, 20, 24, still a year, salary went, uh, 170.
Okay, we've talked a long time in the executive session about this, any other comments or Call for the vote, Jane?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second from Nancy, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemmerstein, aye. Mr. Riley.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider and take action on recommendation of termination, reassignment, resignation and employment of personnel, and look for a motion to approve item 8.
I'm making a motion.
Second from Nancy.
Second from Dawn.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Motion carries. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Admon.
Motion from Dawn, second from Nancy.
Aye.
Call for the vote.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemmerstein, aye. Mr. Newsom, Mr. Riley.
Aye.
You have this list, on my brain.